Welcome to the December 12, 2023 City Council Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the Agenda Overview.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. It is our last meeting this calendar year. I'd like to wish each of you a Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, a myriad of different things, and a Happy New Year. With that, we'll get into the overview. The overview this afternoon includes the presentation of our 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That will be given by Brown Edwards. Our CFO, Donna Witt, will introduce Brown Edwards in the report. Also, about a week or two ago, and then a little bit at the retreat, we got into a description about a public safety recruitment and retention plan. And so this evening, I have Dr. Holly Jennings, and she'll walk you through that. And then we have a couple of business item briefings, which everyone remembers that those are usually, we brief you as staff about an item that will come back to you as a vote, and so we want to make sure that you ask your questions, make sure that you understand what we're proposing, so that when it does come back, you guys are prepared and ready to vote on it. We do have a roll call line and a couple of closed-session items. But Madam Mayor, if it's okay, before I turn it back to you, I'd like to have Kent White come ahead to do a pop-up. At one of your previous meetings, there was a question posed by the public about gas in Jefferson Park, and we sent a memo that went to you and gave you kind of an explanation. I also will let you know that that person that made the public comment, that person has been spoken to and talked and shown. And we'd like to, if anything, make sure that we say it out front on camera, so that if anybody's paying attention or had interest in it, that they'll see that as well. So with that, Madam Mayor, if it's okay, I'll call Kent White.
Thank you, Mr. Benda, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. So at your public comment session, last meeting, a question was raised about monitoring of methane gas in Jefferson Park, which is, of course, in the Deerington neighborhood. You recall the issue with methane gas arose from an awful time in our city's history, when in the early '60s, we closed Jefferson Park Community Pool and turned the park itself into a city dump. The methane gas is a result of the natural decomposition of the materials that are in Jefferson Park right now. The city's been monitoring this off and on for over a decade, and as recently as last year, they contracted with a consulting firm, TRC, to continue that methane gas monitoring. They found that that gas, that those gas ranges were well within the state's health and safety guidelines, so that there was no threat to the public. TRC will once again monitor this for us next year, and then in two-year increments going forward. And this is really just about assuring the public, assuring council, that the situation with that gas is not changing or transitioning. Also, you may recall, prior to your last meeting, this has come up in the Deerington neighborhood planning meetings. It's also come up when we talk about improvements to Jefferson Park that were approved by council through community development block funds. And I just kind of want to say to you and on camera that that work, which is actually proposed to begin to construction early next year, will not impact the fill area. It's not anything that will make that methane gas situation any worse, and the contractors will be well briefed on the fact of that in advance. So we really just appreciate the opportunity to kind of say this aloud to you. And on camera, we've also reached out to Mr. Robert Flood, who was the citizen who addressed this for you at the meeting. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you. Councilman Dolan?
This is something that you have, like, on a monitoring schedule that you're routinely monitoring?
Yes, ma'am. So we did it intensively while we were doing erosion control and stormwater repair work on the, from 2014 through 2017, and then starting again last year, actually at the behest of council, we started doing this, and it'll be every two years going forward.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. White. All right, moving on to our work session Agenda Items. Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and related reports. Ms. Donna Witt.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Brown Edwards holds our annual, our current contract for our annual audit. Chris Bantha is here. He is a partner with Brown Edwards, and he serves as the leader of the firm's state and local government practice. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. As Donna mentioned, I'm Chris Bantha. I'm the audit partner on the city's engagement, and also the audit partner on all the different components as well, including schools, Greater Lynchburg Transit, even the Business Development Center. So I have an overarching responsibility on the entire audit that you should have in front of you, probably electronically now because it's so big. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to everybody at the city and the schools for getting us to this point. It's a solid nine, 10-month process from start to finish, from scheduling to coordination to them providing the books for us to audit, answering our questions, and it culminates today with a presentation at a very high level of the audit results. And so I'm going to go through those, but feel free to ask questions today, tomorrow, over the holidays, whenever you want. We spend 1,000-plus hours doing this audit, so we can probably answer pretty much any question you may have on that. But what we're going to do is we're going to go over the four components of your audit. So first of all, the primary purpose you engage us as auditors is to provide you an independent opinion on your financial statements. When you look at the financial statements, they're, I think, 250 pages long. Financial statements for governments continue to get longer and longer, more and more complex. There's new standards every year, so there's a lot that goes into providing an opinion on your financial statements. And when I say financial statements, I'm speaking of the first 25 pages of governmental balance sheets, income statements, 170 pages of footnotes, 25 other schedules in the back, pretty much everything until the compliance section. As part of that opinion, we give you our thoughts on whether the financials are materially correct, and I'm happy to report today that, once again, the city as a whole received an unmodified or unqualified opinion on your financial statements. So that's the highest level of assurance we can give as external independent auditors, and happy to report that here. The second phase of your audit is the fact that you are a governmental entity in Virginia, and because of that, we have to perform your audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards. Those standards require us to take a deeper dive into your operations, how the city, the schools, all the entities of the city, how you protect your assets, how you ensure these financial statements don't have errors in them, how you prevent fraud. We look at both the design of those processes and procedures, making sure that they're designed appropriately, but then we also look at the execution of those, to make sure that you are following what is designed, because you can design controls and processes all day and make sure that you have processes that are prevent fraud, but unless you're following them, they're not effective. So as part of that, while we're performing our audit, we analyze those, and we'll provide input on deficiencies. Those deficiencies may be called a significant deficiency or a material weakness. We do not have any material weaknesses in design or operating effectiveness. We did have a material weakness this year that we reported, related to some one-time journal entries we had to post for the school report. Those were due to some turnover in some certain positions, and they're things that we've not seen before and we would not expect to see again, but it seemed to be one-time items. Also, because you are a government in Virginia, you have to follow, we have to follow a compliance supplement from the Auditor of Public Accounts of Virginia. It's about a 200-page document with other compliance matters that we have to look at that are non-financial in nature. Some of them might be just looking at your conflict of interest statements. As part of that testing, if we had significant findings, we'd have to report those to you. We did not have any significant findings. We had one, I think I would say probably immaterial finding in the schools. There was a small overspending in one of the budget line items, but as a whole, schools did not overspend their budget. The third phase of your audit is you do operate a commercial airport. Because of that, you do add, have an add-on to ticket prices called a passenger facility charge. The Federal Aviation Administration requires us to perform a compliance audit on that, how you collect those PFC charges and how you spend them. Happy to report no compliance or control findings during that audit as well. Finally, you did expend almost $85 million of federal expenditures this year. $33 million of that was American Rescue Plan funding that was received a couple of years ago but used this year. Because of the significance of the federal funding that you do spend, we have to perform what's called a federal single audit. That audit involves us selecting certain large federal programs once every three years, but in the case of COVID funding, we have to look at it every year, and perform hyper-focused audit tests on those federal programs. During that testing, we look at how the city ensures that they spend that money in accordance with those federal requirements, but then we also not only look at how you ensure you do it, but we also do test to make sure that you are, in fact, spending that money correctly. This year, we looked at child nutrition, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which was about $33 million over $85 million of expenditures, and then foster care and your, some school emergency relief funding, which also is COVID-related. So we looked at about 66% of your $85 million of federal expenditures and had no findings related to that testing either. Any questions so far on the audit results? Also, as audit partner, I'm required to communicate to you any other issues that may have come up during performance of the audit. We can talk about a clean opinion and other findings, but sometimes there are things that come up during the audit. It could be disagreements with management, situations where management gets a second opinion, significant audit adjustments, things of that nature. Pretty clean report there. We just had a few journal entries over at the schools that we did report as part of that weakness, but other than that, no such items to talk about. Any questions?
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Could you go into those details, please, for the schools?
The details of the finding? So there were a couple items that at the year-end close that were not, I think there was an accrual, a, I think it was a Virginia Retirement System accrual, there were some, their self-insured for insurance, that was not accounted for at year-end, and when we had posted those adjustments, it did have a significant impact on the financials, and because of that, it was a material weakness. We've not had, I don't, I don't recall having adjustments in those areas in the last 10 years, so it appeared to be something that really had to turn over in those positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to public safety recruitment and retention. Dr. Holly Jennings.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me okay? Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for having me before you this afternoon. I'm here to talk with you about a very important subject, and that is recruitment and retention within our public safety departments. So we have been working on a strategic plan that can be applied to any of our public safety departments based on the number of vacancies in those departments. So as of today, the Department of Emergency Services has 10 vacancies for communications specialists. Our fire department has one vacancy for firefighters, and our Lynchburg Police Department has 28 vacancies for police officers. So the crux of this plan is going to focus on the police department today because of their number of vacancies. That's where the need is at this moment. If any of our other departments start to experience the same number or level of vacancies, we can immediately put this strategic plan in place for any number of those departments. So with that being said, I would first like to thank Chief Zudema, Chief Wormser, and the Department of Emergency Services Director, Melissa Foster, for working with me on this over the past couple of weeks, and I really want to especially thank the LPD team that has been working with me to help me get data, to work on some of the things that we've been moving forward, and without them, this would have not been possible, because we've been doing a lot over the past couple of weeks to really make sure we are working on recruitment and retention. So in the summary, I talked about how there is a nationwide study out by PERF. PERF is the Police Executive Research Forum. They do a lot of the national research for police departments in our country. They estimated that nationwide, there was a 47% more police officer resignation in 2022 than in 2019 nationwide. We did not see those numbers jump in resignations here in Lynchburg. We've been fairly consistent during that time period, but what we have seen happen is a decrease in the number of applicants that we're receiving. So just to kind of give you an idea, in 2019, we have 475 applicants for the police department to be police officers. We had 24 go into the academy that year. In 2023, so far, we've had 284 applicants and 13 go into the academy so far. So we have to find a more strategic way to make sure that we are recruiting officers to join our LPD, but not just making sure that we're focusing on the recruitment. The recruitment is important, but we also have to remember the people that are here doing the job while these vacancies exist. So a significant part of this plan is making sure that we're also focusing on keeping our LPD officers here, because there is no replacement for a well-trained LPD officer. So that's why you'll see that this plan focuses on both recruitment and retention. So let's kind of jump in. It is a four-point, four-pronged strategy that we're looking at. We want to make sure we're taking into account employee satisfaction. We want to look to see if there are any procedural changes that we can make to make the hiring process easier. We want to make sure that we're expanding our outreach so that we can look for anyone that might want to join us here, and then we want to look at compensation strategies as well, which you guys have been doing over the past couple of years anyways. Let's start with employee satisfaction. Again, this data comes directly from the police department. It does not include, at this point in time, the Department of Emergency Services or the Fire Department, because they have not reached a level of vacancies at this point in which we would activate this plan. So this point forward, we are focusing strictly on the police department because they have the need at the moment. So I worked with LPD to administer a retention survey to all of the LPD officers and staff. We wanted to know from them what would make a difference in keeping them here with the Lynchburg Police Department. We did not just dream up a survey. We used research studies from PERF and other agencies that are familiar with law enforcement to design the survey around what has been best practices in other areas in keeping LPD, or keeping police officers with law enforcement in general, just because the climate of recruiting and retention in law enforcement around the country has changed. There has been a lot of research around that in the past few years, so we used that research to design the survey. The survey was open for two weeks. It closed on November the 17th. People could participate in the survey completely anonymously. We used Survey Monkey as an outside kind of tool to administer the survey so that people would feel comfortable giving their feedback. It does not track AP addresses, email addresses. No one had to log in to take the survey, because we felt like that would be the best way to give feedback. Based on the people who participated in the survey, it was 137 participants. That's 73% of our LPD, and 114 of those identified as sworn officers, so that's 77% of our sworn officers with the Lynchburg Police Department. The first question we asked was, over the next six months, what is your professional plans? Are you planning on staying with LPD? What are your thoughts? The majority of folks said that they were going to stay with LPD. There was a percentage of people, around 13%, that said that they were considering resigning within the next six months. As we go into this, you'll kind of see some data around maybe why that might be, and then a small percentage, around 2%, said that they would be possibly retiring in the next six months. So the next question we asked was around their satisfaction with their work-life balance. That impacts your satisfaction greatly in any job, especially for our law enforcement staff, and you can see here that about 43% said that they were satisfied with their work-life balance, and the remainder either were not satisfied or they didn't have strong feelings one way or the other. Then we asked some questions around what impacts your work-life balance here with the Lynchburg Police Department. Of course, the number-one response that we received, 23.5%, were the staffing and vacancies that we have right now. Below that, you'll see work duties outside of assigned hours. It's basically all the overtime that people are having to put in related to the vacancies that we have. And then you'll see shift work, the rotating schedules. A lot of times, people having to attend court and trainings on their day off, and then just the general increase in call volume and workload that's happened over the past couple of years. The next question we asked was how satisfied people are with their benefits here within the city. And as you can see, 57, 58% were satisfied with their benefits. The rest were either not satisfied or either didn't have strong feelings one way or the other. And when we asked what factors considered into that satisfaction rating, 22.6% said the cost of family insurance was a big factor in that. 16% said options for health insurance after retirement was a big factor in that. And then, again, kind of what I saw consistently throughout the survey is the vacancies and the staffing issues are causing them to not be able to use their paid time off because of the staffing issues. So the next thing you will see is a list of things that we asked, would any of these factors influence your decision to stay with the Lynchburg Police Department? And these were the things that we pulled from those research studies, and it was a lot of things, and I only listed the top 10 because they had the most significant numbers that found it extremely valuable. And so you will see here that list. At the very top, they found 90% found that retirement health insurance options would be extremely valuable in their decision rather to stay or leave. Below that, insurance benefits for family at no extra cost to the employee, retention bonuses, having a take-home police car, new and/or updated equipment, having a voice in leadership decisions and feedback to command staff, compensation for sick leave upon retirement, newer updated uniforms, additional paid time off, and additional pay for educational attainment. I am going to go through each one of these individually and kind of let you know where we are in the process of taking a look or either implementing things to make sure that we are taking care of our LPD officers. But before I do that, the next question was, if we were able to implement any of these things on that list, how impactful would that be on your choice to stay or leave? Because what we didn't want to do is jump in and implement a bunch of stuff that may or may not cost money, and then it really doesn't impact people's decision to stay. 97.81% found that it would be impactful on their decision, and when I sorted this data by those 13% that you saw on the slide earlier that said that they were considering resigning in the next six months, when I sorted it just by those responses, the number-one thing on the list became having a take-home police car, which you guys started working on on last year's budget. And so it's good to know that we're already trying to put things in place that will impact their decision to stay here. The next question we asked in the survey was about the new police station. So we have a new police station that you guys have made possible, and what we wanted to do was make sure that we are fitting that station with things that will support our officers in their wellness and their satisfaction and their job. One of the research studies talked about how police officers, when they come off of a shift, have a lot of things going on, right? And they may need decompression time between leaving that shift and going home to their families. And so we wanted to say, hey, is there anything that we could, with furnishings, fixtures, or equipment, that's FFE, I'm learning new terms that Gaynell helped me out with, that we could make sure that we are putting into the police station to help with that? We got a lot of input. This is the response that we received on what would be beneficial to them and the police station. And then we had just a general, do you have any additional comments that you would like to share about recruitment and retention? 22.6% of those comments continued to focus on benefits and pay, things like take-home car, retirement benefits. 10% of those comments, almost 11% of those comments, talked about leadership within the department, continued communication, continued feedback, continued transparency. 10.2% updated uniforms and load-bearing vests, we're going to talk about that more here in a moment, and 10.2% talked about updates to the grooming policy. Grooming policy, that term in general is a military-type term, and it refers to dress and appearance, hair, things like that. I just want to make sure I'm defining the terms as we go through. So just to briefly summarize the survey results, what I gathered from it was that staffing and vacancies are creating an increased workload for our police force, creating lower job satisfaction and the risk for burnout for our officers. Added benefits would be impactful in influencing retention, and we now have data around what would be most impactful, so we're not moving forward without asking, hey, what would help in this situation? So now I'm going to go through each one of those things you saw on the list. I'm going to start with these four. This is part of our citywide benefits package. So if we make changes to these four areas, it would impact all of our city employees. That would have huge financial implications and other things, so we are exploring what other options we can make available with these four things that would be beneficial to all of our departments. That's going to take a little more time, and so I want to really focus on the things that we are able to do now. So talking about next steps. There we go. Looking at the police station, I can tell you that Captain Hinckley with the police department had gone around already and met with many of the units to ask those same questions, to ask, hey, what do we need in the station? And they're already planning for many of those things on the list, but he has also asked for me to provide him the specifics from the survey to make sure that they can check off that list of things as they're finalizing their plans with the police station. So we are already working on that. The take-home police car program, which you guys implemented in last year's budget, started with 10 cars, and that was an incentive for police officers also to, with crime in the city, to have folks that live in the city to have a car at their house. We are still working on getting that into place. As you heard with the fire truck at our last meeting, how long it is taking to get a fire truck, it is taking us a significant amount of time to get cars as well. So we are working on getting the cars. We are working on making this happen. It is still in progress. It's just taking a little longer to get there because of car manufacturers. Newer updated equipment, so I heard this a lot in the survey. This is a big topic with LPD, is moving from what they currently have, which is the duty belt, to a load-bearing vest. You can see in the picture kind of the difference. There's been some studies around how the duty belt may impact back, hips, that type of thing, and they are currently testing vests in the field. There are five officers currently testing the vest. They are moving towards having more vests available to officers, but there will be a period of time in which there has to be some training that goes along with that, because, as you know, they are well-trained, and there's a lot of muscle memory about all of the equipment that goes on those belts, and then you're going to move all of that equipment to different places. And you don't want an officer to be in a life-or-death situation and need one of those things from that belt, and it's somewhere different, and they reach somewhere different for it. So there has to be some training around that. But the police department is already working on testing those vests and getting more of those vests into the department. Next would be the grooming policy. LPD is currently working on having an advisory group that will review the policies that directly impact their employees. I'll talk more about that in just a second. The very first thing that's on the list to review is the grooming policy. So working on it, getting there, making progress in that area as well. The next thing we heard about was voice in leadership decisions and/or feedback to command staff. This committee, which is going to be led by Captain Ten Clemens, is going to be a committee of eight active positions that represent both sworn and professional staff. It will be an advisory group to the command staff. They will review policies. They will make suggestions for improvement, and that way, we're getting feedback directly from the officers on what needs to happen within LPD. One of the things that I heard about quite a bit in the survey was that the chief holds meetings after any critical incidents and how valuable that the officers found that to be, so making sure we're continuing to do that, and the command staff continuing to engage with work groups, actually going out and doing shifts and things like that. Another thing I heard quite a bit about was uniforms. There was right much input on having new or updated uniforms. There was some discussion around the current uniforms being uncomfortable in the summer and in the heat. LPD has already requested uniforms from vendors to see if there are more comfortable uniforms that we could purchase. And again, that committee that I talked to you about that's already getting together will start to look at those, and then they will start testing the uniforms as well. So moving on to the second prong of this plan, that is procedural changes. Is there anything that we can do to make the hiring process easy so that we could get more folks into those vacancies, now that we've heard how much those vacancies are impacting our department? One of the things that we talked about was alternative training and testing opportunities. We are currently using something called the Fast Track Academies. It's called Option 5, and it's where out-of-state already officers that are working out of state can come to Virginia and get through the process much faster to then go ahead and be working on the street. It speeds up that process. We use two academies already in the state, one in Fairfax and one in Virginia Beach. If we have more veteran officers that we are recruiting into the department, there is a possibility of being able to have one of those academies here in Lynchburg, so that's one of the things that we're looking at. We're also looking at possible additional testing sites and partners in strategic geographical locations, and we'll talk to you more in a moment about some of those locations that we're looking at, and if we have an area in which we have a lot of folks coming from, are there places there that we can do some of our testing? We're already looking at how can we hold super events for out-of-state candidates, and are there some virtual components that we can add into the process to speed up that process? process a little more? So looking at our expanded outreach, we already have in place a sworn officer that is designated as a full-time recruiter for LPD. She started in that position in November to specifically be intentional about targeting vacancies and getting folks in. And then we did some research to determine, are there specific areas that we could recruit, both locally, statewide, and nationally? We looked at multiple research studies that said there are certain areas in which law enforcement as a career, the interest is still high, but in those states, the pay may not be very well, or the state's commitment to law enforcement may be low, or general overall satisfaction in law enforcement is low, but yet you still have a high interest. That would be a great place for us to go and say, hey, it's it's great to work in Virginia, and it's really great to work in the city of Lynchburg. So targeting in some of those states and some of those areas. That targeted outreach is going to be kind of two-pronged. We're going to, one, be looking for new officers, and that outreach is going to be in areas that have specific educational programs around policing. We are currently registered for seven recruiting events in four states outside of Virginia, and we are also now partnering with the military to attend events for service members separating from the armed forces. We're also looking for veteran officers. We are looking at a comprehensive recruitment and marketing strategy to attract those highly-qualified officers to come here and go through the Fast Track Academies to fill those vacancies faster. Faster we can get those vacancies filled, higher satisfaction, stronger police force, right? So we currently have an RFP out for vendors that specialize in marketing for public safety recruitment that will assist us in making sure that we are targeting veteran officers in the areas that we're looking. And the last and and final kind of piece of this is looking at some compensation strategies. We have always recently done some recruitment bonuses, we're looking at kind of amplifying those, but in doing that, also remembering that we still have folks here that are doing the job while we're going through these times where it's hard to recruit folks. And so we want to make sure that we're still recognizing their service and want to have them continue their commitment commitment with the Lynchburg Police Department. So these bonuses would be based on need and determined by the number of vacancies at the time. So as the vacancies, as the vacancy numbers go down, the bonuses also go down, so it's based on need. It also requires a three- or four-year commitment, if you're brand-new, it requires a three-year commitment for your sign-in bonus. If you're here and you're you're getting a retention bonus, it requires a four-year commitment. It's very similar to what the military does when you're about to end your first tour of duty and it's maybe time to re-enlist, they often offer a bonus for you to sign up for four more years. It's very similar to that model. And then if separation occurs before the end of that contractual timeframe, there would be a repayment plan of that bonus. So if I said, hey, I'm going to accept the bonus, but a year later I decide I don't want to work here anymore, then there are options for paying that back. There are exemptions, and we're looking at that, we're looking at what would be legal around that area. But if, you know, you had a sick family member that you had to move out of state to take care of, that's not going to be held against you. So the way that bonus structure would look, LPD and LFD, if you have nine or less vacancies, the bonus amount would be $5,000, whether you are a recruitment or retention, so if you currently work there, or if you're you're signing on to work there, it's $5,000. And that is where we are currently with recruitment bonuses. And then, as you can see, as the vacancies go up, the amount of recruitment bonus and retention bonus goes up. The Department of Emergency Services, those numbers are smaller because the department is smaller. And so it would be four or less, and then, as you see, it goes forward, but the amounts are the same. With that being said, you can see one of the top things that was selected as being impactful or extremely valuable for our LPD officers was retention bonuses. It was the third thing down. The first two are part of our citywide benefits package, so again, we're looking at what we can do with some of those things, but retention bonuses are something that we could do now and was listed as something that would be very impactful. Just to summarize quickly, we are trying to work on each one of those things that we got input back from, from LPD folks. You can see the list here, we're looking at how can we can do retention bonuses, you guys already started a take-home police car program, we're looking at how we can figure out getting the new and updated equipment, that would be the load-bearing vest, how we can get those into the force faster, making sure we're continuing to find ways to get voice in leadership decisions, making sure we're looking at uniforms, getting input into the police station, we're going to continue to look at those citywide benefits, and we're really, really wanting to make sure that we're getting those vacancies filled as fast as possible to alleviate the stress that they're under from from those vacancies. That is all I had for you, and I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Feroli?
Clearly, I'm in favor of amending the grooming policy. But I'd be interested to see what that committee comes up with. I had a couple thoughts, a couple questions, first of which was, you had targeted six months for saying, hey, in the next six months, are you going to make a decision? And yet, it's my understanding, it for a current officer coming into our agency, it could take longer than that. So the question is, in looking at six months, is that the proper gauge to understand if you're going to be staying, considering the fact that other agencies, it could take a year to get into those organizations?
Yeah, we chose six months because we felt like we needed to know kind of what the immediate outlook was going to be as far as staffing goes. Our new officers, they are under a contract for the training they went through, so they're going to probably stay at least three years. So this was targeted more to those that have been here for a while, and we really kind of wanted an outlook over the next six months of how many people are planning on staying and how many are planning on going.
That makes sense. I guess some of my takeaways were, I love conversations like this because it comes back to something I went over to in grad school, where are we going with LPD? Why are we going there? And what are we doing to get there? And if the frontline folks can't articulate that, back to the command staff, back to council, back to the public, then we got a bit of a vision problem, I think. And ultimately, that falls on us to establishing where we're going. And to me, I think it boils down to the LPD should be the number-one choice for any law enforcement professional in the Commonwealth of Virginia, straight up. And that's a very high bar to set, but that's what our residents are asking for, and that's what they deserve. And I think we've made a lot of good progress. This summary, I think, got us a lot of good data, so chief chiefs and and director, I guess, thank you for gathering this data and taking it on the way you have, but I think there's a lot of progress could be made. The take-home car was one that I was iffy on. I wasn't convinced that that's something that would actually impact that, and far be it for me admitting when I'm wrong on something, so clearly, I was wrong on that front. And yet, I would want to put emphasis on, if that's something we're going to pursue, at least from my perspective, make sure they're living in the city. I don't want to send an LPD car out to Manita if that means they're driving into the city to work, albeit good for Manita to have have that, I guess. I'm looking through my chicken scratch. In your research and engaging with these men and women, what discussions of, when you say procedures, where did that conversation go? And when I'm asking that, I'm aiming to say, I understand it's very hard to be an officer in this day and time, a lot of that's made difficult by Richmond, but are there any policies here locally that make it harder for the frontline to do their job or not be as much of a police officer as they might should be?
So that's a two-part answer. So the part you're asking about are officers that are currently here and doing their job, and there has been feedback around that that we've had over the past couple of years as some of those things have changed. That's part of what that committee will be talking about and providing feedback on, are those types of policies that are currently in place for officers. The procedural changes that we were focusing here were more on the hiring process, and the question that I got in that discussion was making sure that we're not lowering our standards or expectations, and that is definitely not happening. It's still things that are required for accreditation, legal standards, all of those things that have to be done. It's just how can we make that process easier for folks, and especially if we move our recruitment out of state, how do we then do that? So it's just looking at making those types of changes to the procedural process. But again, that committee that's coming together, under Tim Clemens, they will be looking at current policies for current police officers at LPD.
And would that include Operation?
Yes.
Day today? Okay. Because that's one component in my ride-alongs, and I'm going like this when I'm talking about this, so the chief don't see me or hear me, but, you know, I I understand to the best I can relate to, which is very little, but for the however many ride-alongs I went on, especially in the first two and a half years of being on this, Deus, it's just really hard to be an officer, and anything we're doing to make it less than what it should be needs to be looked at. And I say that very vaguely because I don't want to give any, you know, strategies out that I've been talking about with the command staff out to the public, per se, but, you know, if there's a bad guy, we should go get him. I mean, just plainly said. So I commend you all for taking this on. Yes, we should be acting on this. I'll say it again, Lynchburg Police Department should be the number-one choice for law enforcement professionals in Virginia, and this is, if this is the stuff to get us there, let's let's get after it.
Thank you. Councilmember Helgeson?
You know, I guess that what we're looking at here is, first of all, the difficulty with recruiting and retaining of sworn officers, right?
Yes, sir.
So with the, your survey, what you did is you had about one hundred and fourteen that were sworn officers, that replied. Of that, most of them, eighty-seven percent, said, things are good, we're staying. So the focus, to me, should have been on that eighty-seven, or the thirteen percent, or maybe something even better, would have been to utilize the exit interviews that have been done of people who've actually left. When we're doing surveys of people that are, eighty-seven percent of them are saying, hey, things are great, we like it, lots of good ideas, I get it. But the focus, especially when we're trying to recruit and retain, shouldn't be the people that we're already recruiting and retaining, it should be on the people that we haven't recruited and haven't retained, and why did you leave? That should, in my opinion, should be, should be the focus, as opposed to... Secondly, I'm glad to hear about the this take-home cars. I think I pushed that probably about five to eight years ago at first, and glad that we finally implemented it this year, and and I recognize there's some cars that probably haven't been able to be acquired yet. I've heard from a lot of officers over the years, and absolutely have to be in the city, so that that was, you know, a policy that I think we crafted, correct?
Created.
Yeah, it's not, we don't want them parked in Campbell County. So those two things, I think, are, I'm glad to hear about the the take-home cars. And I think, you know, when you're looking at the police sworn officers, recruiting and retaining them, a really good benchmark is to say, well, why did the people leave? You know, and I recognize there, sometimes people just left, and for whatever reason, but as much as we can do from those exit interviews, I think that would be much better information gleaned, especially when a hundred percent of them left, as opposed to only thirteen percent that you're gleaning from are even thinking about leaving. So just my two cents, so thank you.
Councilmember Hesons?
This is, I mean, there's a lot of really helpful information, and I kind of echo Councilmember Helgeson's comments on the take-home cars, because I don't think that, I think that they're more than a recruitment or retention benefit, I think it's actually a force multiplier. When I first moved into the house that I live in on my street, there was a Lynchburg Police Department car at the end of the street, never any issues. And then he left, and he ended up renting it to a state trooper. So there was a state police car at the end of my street, never any issues. Then the house got sold, then there was no more take-home car, and then within a year, one of my neighbor's cars got stolen. So I really believe in the the impact that having those vehicles parked around the city, which is why I think it would be crucial, like the vice mayor said, to make that kind of a benefit if they live in the city, right? But I've got some questions about some of the other things on here that may be more along the lines of probably the city manager's or maybe even Donna's wheelhouse, but retirement health insurance options, I know that that is a costly item. The question that I have about that is, there an option for somebody upon retirement to continue paying into the group, so to speak, at a lesser rate than they might be able to get it on the commercial market? So instead of us footing the bill for the insurance, saying, hey, we have this large group of employees, can we offer an option for them to basically pay the, like, the costs to participate? Is that something that's been considered or looked at in the past with that?
Yes, so just to make sure we're clear, city employees currently can, when they retire, keep their health insurance, they just have to pay their portion and the city portion, which would be much lower than if they went out and got, because they are in with the large group, as you said. So that is available now, and we're continuing to explore what other options are available that we can provide.
What's the cost on that? Do we know, do we have a number?
It depends on if if it's just you, or if if you have family insurance or whatever, it depends. I do not know those numbers right off the bat.
For one person, it's about $8,000?
A year or?
Yes.
Eight thousand a year, and then I think...
I just want to repeat it in case people couldn't hear Donna, it was $8,000 a year.
Eight thousand a year.
Yes.
Because I know that the, I know that the intention of the hazardous duty supplement that they get when they leave is to cover the cost of that health insurance until they can collect social security and are eligible for Medicare.
Yes.
So I get that. So I'm just kind of wondering, is there something that, I guess, where, I know it's expensive, I know it went away, I can't remember how many years it went?
1996.
There you go.
Correct.
So everybody hired after 96. There's still a handful of people around that are getting health insurance upon retirement, but it's not many.
That's correct.
In the city. So that's, that's, I guess, that's a, the reason I look at that is that's kind of a previous benefit, I've heard that conversation a lot. So I think that any options that we could do specifically to target these public safety folks, because there is a much higher incident, incidents of cancer and some other, you know, illnesses that come along with the line of work that they're in, if there's something that we can do that's not a huge burden on the taxpayers, but it's also makes it easier for them to get a policy, rather than just going out to the marketplace, that would be something I'd be interested in looking at. And then, one of the other things about this is the compensation for sick leave upon retirement. So when employees are accruing sick leave, right, how is that budgeted? Because I remember they used to give us this sheet every year that was like your total compensation, right? That would say, this is your pay, this is your vacation leave, this is your sick leave, like, this is what it's all worth that you're earning for the year, right? So it's being advertised as compensation. Are we holding that money when they're earning the sick leave? Is that money that's in the bank, essentially? How's that work?
The way it's part of your pay is you accrue one sick day a month, eight hours of sick leave a month, unless you're a firefighter, which is different, but...
I know that math better than the other math.
And then you can carry up to nine hundred and ninety-six...
We were thirteen forty-four, I think.
Nine sixty-eight on the books, but you don't get paid out those when you leave.
So so I guess the question I have is, how is that budgeted, right? Because I know that the annual leave you get when you leave, so that's kind of almost, like, it's part of your pay, it's it's there, it's money that we account for, are we not accounting for the sick leave?
We, we do it based on accrual, we book an entry at the end of the year based on the value of it, but we don't, we don't carry that cost.
Got it.
So because we don't pay it out when you leave.
Because I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of localities that do, so so that's just something that I was wondering how that how that works.
And that changes with the hybrid employees on how that's also taken in consideration because hybrid employees have a short-term disability, so it looks different now with hybrid employees. So it looks different now with hybrid employees.
Okay. Got it. And then the last question that I have is about the retention bonuses and the, I guess, the new hire bonuses, all of that. The payback portion, right? Is this going to be designed in a way where it's a lump sum? Like if it's an $8,000 bonus for this period, you're getting the whole eight upfront?
Right.
Is there any reason that we couldn't kind of separate that a little bit? I'm not saying all of it, but you know, you give them a huge chunk of it upfront and then that way if they leave early, that, you know, that's the way the military does it.
Yeah, we've looked at that. And it's something we can continue to look at and explore. The main part of it is it's more attractive when you get it as a lump sum. And the whole goal is to try to get people to want to stay or to come. And it's just more attractive when you get it all at one time.
Got it. Okay. I think you answered all my questions. Thank you.
One other fun fact, there's about three and a half million dollars that we budget annually for retirees. So those are our employees that are currently retired, still receiving those benefits because they were hired before June 30th, 1996.
Councilwoman Wilder?
Appreciate it. When you were working on your study, did we do a comparison to other localities similar to Lynchburg? I'm getting over the horse, I'm so sorry. Did we do a study of other localities similar to Lynchburg, like Roanoke? Other urban areas like Danville?
So I did look at those other areas when it came to the bonuses. And currently, our neighbors immediately to the north are offering a $20,000 bonus. Our neighbors to the west, back in 2021, increased theirs to $7,000. If you go south, they are offering recruitment bonuses at around $5,000. And then if you go east towards Richmond, it's $10,000 recruitment bonus. And then they call it, they're doing a retention bonus, but they call it longevity. They call it a longevity bonus. And so, yes, I did look at those areas in that regard. But I don't know that any other areas have done a similar type of survey and/or marketing strategy in this area. The other thing that I did look into because of the retirement interest is how many localities are still offering retirement bonuses or retirement health insurance when people leave. And it's very few in the state that are still doing that. The only one close to us is Salem. There are no others in our region or geographical area that are offering health insurance upon retirement.
And also, you mentioned about officers like leaving the force. What are some of the main concerns? Is it like management? Is it just the workload? Or what are some of the main concerns that people are leaving the force?
So the main concern that I saw over and over and over in the survey was the vacancies and the workload and the amount that people are having to work. That was the thing I saw over and over and over again in the survey.
So do they feel like management supports them well and things like that?
Yes, so I will say, there were a total of 296 comments in the survey. So one person could have the opportunity to comment three different times throughout the survey. Less than 1% of those comments were any type of complaint around command staff and/or the chief. So the majority of folks are feeling supported and, as you can see, are wanting to stay with LPD.
And do they have, do they have like a cadet program? I know there are certain places in counties, they can volunteer at fire departments and get training. Do they have a cadet program here? I think I've seen some person, I know at the academy downtown, but I wasn't sure, if they have a cadet program, the kind of youth in Lynchburg could be a part of, kind of the training ground to get into the police force.
There is a team of officers that is the PNR team. So they do recruitment type of initiatives. They go to the events at the city schools. And one of the things they go to is their criminal justice program to engage the youth in the city around what's happening at LPD to try to get them interested in possibly serving their community after graduation.
Okay, great. So thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Hoggson?
I guess just maybe, Donna, you had, you made, perked an interest in my mind. You said we have three and a half million budgeted for retiree. You said there are $8,000 for the health insurance, retiree health insurance about now. Now, what year did that go back to?
1996.
1996. So that budgeted amount would be about 437 employees. Do we have anywhere near that that are from 1996?
I don't have the exact number in my head, but we still have a number, a large number of employees that are still on that plan.
And lots of those are probably not still employed here, but they've retired or something before and still on the plan, right?
Yes, they have to be retired to be in that number.
And so with that number as well, several years ago, we also, you looked at some incentive for like a Medicare Advantage or, you know, especially once people got over 65, which takes that $8,000 down considerably. There are that many people that are, have retired, have worked here since, continuously since 1996 or have left and haven't met the Medicare age where they could get on...
Well, in the police and fire, you have a lot of young retirees. So they can, if they were hired before June 30th, 1996, they can be in that group for an extended period of time.
437 is citywide, though, not just the police?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And so that number, so do we use about that much each year in the budget or is that...
Well, the cost per cell insurance, that money goes into helping pay for claims. So we do use, we don't use all of it, but we do the majority of it. And then if there's excess at the end of the year, we write it back.
I just didn't know if that was like, for that many people for that long ago, you know, that there's, those metrics are getting smaller set of people that could be there. And to still have 437...
We have some people employed that were hired before 1996.
Yeah.
So there's still more to retire under that plan.
Yeah. I mean, as I look in here, I mean, we've got two people that have been here a long time, three people.
I don't know, three years.
One, two, three, four, five. Been here a long time? Shoot, about five of staff here. So it just seems like a very, it seems like a smaller shrinking number. So just once we come up...
It is shrinking.
Yeah, once we come up with a budget, you know, once we do next year's budget is all that made me kind of think of. If we're budgeting three and a half and we're only using a million, or if we're budgeting three and a half and using, you know, three million, I get it. But just, it may seem like a high number. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your work on this. Yeah? Okay. Moving on to business item briefings. Community development block grant, CDPG, and home program, public hearing, and adoption of a resolution regarding housing and non-housing goals for the fiscal year 2025, program year 2024, annual action plan. This item will appear before council for action on January 9th, 2023. Ms. Melville Walker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Peraldi, and members of city council. On January 9th, city council will be conducting the public hearing to review and adopt the housing and non-housing goals for fiscal year 25, 2025, within the community development block grant and home program. The citizen participation plan for the CDPG and home program and the five-year plan require city council to conduct an annual public hearing to allow citizens the opportunity to comment on the housing and non-housing goals proposed for the planned year. The public comment period will commence on December 22nd by the placement of a public notice in the news and advance newspaper and on the city's website, and will conclude at the scheduled public hearing.
2023, because my brain's not ready to say 2024. So it will, it will come before council on January 9th, 2024. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm done.
Oh, you're done? All right. Well, for your record, and we're good. Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions about that? No? Okay, moving on. Thank you. Moving on to conditional use permit. West Lynchburg Baptist Church preschool, 3031 Memorial Avenue. This item will appear before council for action on January 9th, 2024. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. The CUP petition will allow the use of a portion of the existing structure at 3031 Memorial Avenue as a childcare center for up to 70 students. Childcare facilities and preschools are permitted in this zoning district upon approval of a CUP from council. The comprehensive plan recommends an institution use for the subject property. These areas include our religious, educational, and other nonprofit entities in the city. Planning staff has recommended approval of this item to Planning Commission, who will hold a public hearing tomorrow, December 13th, 2023, and make a recommendation. A city council public hearing will be held on January 9th, 2024.
Great. Any questions? Okay, thank you. All right. Relocation of polling place, Second Ward, Fourth Precinct. This item will appear before council for action on January 20, sorry, January 9th, 2024. Mr. David Newmeyer, Chair of the Electoral Board, and Mr. Dan Pence, General Registrar.
Thank you, councilmembers. Pleasure to be here. With me is Dan Pence, our registrar, and he'll also be making a presentation to us with some detail. The vice chair, Steve Troxel, and our board secretary, Betty Gibbs, are also here tonight. And I wanted to give council just a very short report on the state Electoral Board and the registrar's office. All is working very well, in my opinion. There's still some litigation pending on the personnel changes that we made in July. And I don't think that's going to end up anytime soon. But in the meantime, our registrar and deputy registrars have been dedicated to effectively and fully implementing the laws of the state regarding voting and putting in a great number of hours in the process, I think. I know particularly in, on the part of Dan Pence and also my colleague, board members. I think the Electoral Board and the General Registrar have done a great deal of training as well of our officers of election, many of whom are new. And Mr. Pence will comment on a few challenges that we faced in counting and reporting the results of the election in November. We're here tonight to change the polling place in Ward Two. This is the first year in which I was the board member responsible visiting Fairview Christian Church. And I really discovered that it's not very handicapped accessible. And there are better options close by, so we're here to recommend one of those options. At the end of December, I will be rolling off the Electoral Board for the second time in a year. Workload is not compatible with my full-time day job. But I'm pleased that the nominee that's been put forth by the Democratic Party, I think, is highly qualified and you'll enjoy working with that person as well. And it's been a privilege to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, let's talk for a minute about why we think that we need to move our Second Ward, Fourth, Second Ward, Fourth Precinct polling location. You should have in your packet, let me just make sure, there we go. Electoral Board voted at its last meeting in December 7th to transfer the Fairview Heights precinct 204 polling place to Bass Elementary School. We are coming before you today for that consideration and for your review of that recommendation. New polling place would be located outside of the precinct, just barely. So if you've seen the map, it's just on the edge. You actually have to go, you know, right across the boundary in order to get into the Bass Elementary School. But it would be within one mile of the precinct boundary required by Section 242-310 of the Code of Virginia. And the city attorney has advised us that this would be permissible within our, within the code. Why? We are looking for a new polling place because Fairview Christian Church has several access barriers for the disabled, including a flight of stairs from the most-used parking area on Leyburn Street to the polling entrance, an off-street parking lot in Sackett Street that for the handicap has a difficult slope. So as you probably are aware, the slope ratio is about, the grade needs to be within about 12%. The entire parking lot is actually at that or a little more. And then the sidewalk coming up around from there is also kind of right on that boundary. And then it's flat toward the top, but you really have to travel quite a bit in order to get from some portion of the parking lot all the way over into the, into the entrance to the actual polling place where it's located within the Fairview Christian Church. And of course, at the end of that journey, you have a lip over the threshold, which is over the amount that is required by the ADA code. It's possible to put a ramp there, and we've done that in the past. But that's kind of the least of the problems, honestly. So just to give you a quick visual perspective of what this looks like, here is the parking area next to the stairs, which is actually the most direct entrance into the, into the polling place. We have, you know, handicapped parking that can't really be here because of the stairs. It really has to be on the other side. You see on the right-hand side a picture of the parking lot, which you can see has a slope to it, and then the sidewalk coming up to the level area, which also has a slope to it. And then it would come around in this picture to the left to go actually into the, the actual polling place. This is another shot of where we have put handicapped parking in the past. This also is not, not a great location. You see we have a curb cut, which we've used for access this way, but still it's a long traverse around to the actual door. And you see on the right-hand side a picture of the door and the threshold there. It's a little bit difficult to tell from this picture, but it's actually more than you really want, more than is required by the ADA requirements. So our proposal, we would like to make use of Bass Elementary School for the Fourth Precinct, Second Ward, starting with the expected March 2024 Republican primary election. Actually, it's a dual primary at this point. And continuing all the way through subsequent elections for an indefinite future. This is why we bring it to you now, so we can go through the process of having you guys review this and then doing the public review and whatever other pieces you need to do in order to approve this. And as was stated, the public hearing will be on January 9th, 2024. As far as rationale, this gives you a quick map of how it looks. The polling place distance, I did it with my car. It's about .4 miles from the old place to the new place. You can see, you need to come down Campbell Avenue and go up Seabrook, rather, in order to get to the new place. Bass Elementary, obviously, is a city-owned or school property, and the ADA standards are maintained there. So as things would evolve, they would be put into place. It's something we can't really force on Fairview Christian Church very easily because that's, that's, you know, not within our jurisdiction. The parking in the proposed location is on a level grade, and the polling place in the gymnasium is on the bottom floor. Curbside voting also could be within the 40-foot prohibitive activities perimeter due to the proximity of parking to the poll entrance. In the other location, we couldn't really put a curbside voting very close to the entrance. And as you know, the, one of the goals we have is to have the prohibited area, the 40-foot boundary. If we can put curbside voting within that prohibited area, it's better for the voter who's parking to vote. He doesn't have the campaigning, you have to go right next to him while he's doing his curbside voting. Just a quick picture of what the insides look like. This was the left-hand side, the Fairview Christian, the area that they set aside for polling. It's certainly adequate enough. They do have to take out tables and do some manipulation of the space in order to make it appropriate for Election Day. On the right-hand side, you see a picture of Bass Elementary. The gymnasium, we would use, clearly there's plenty of space there to use and to make, make a polling place, however we want to configure it. And one more slide, just so you see the comparison of how it was at Fairview Christian versus Bass Elementary. We have a pretty wide area of parking. And the two doors, you can see on the right, which are the, would be the entrance, both entrances could be usable for the polling place. We have enough room there for some of the do curbside parking right there near the entrance. And the agenda, I mean, sorry, the ordinance is in your agenda packet, so. Questions?
Anyone? Councilmember Hoggson?
Yes, sir.
Just back up two pictures, two slides, right there. You know, that is what I saw when I visited Bass. And it was surprised, just so we all can see it, if those of us who haven't been there. But when the school said, "Oh, we've got to spend $15 million to redo the gymnasium," that gymnasium is impeccable. I mean, that's why you have this nice shiny picture of that. I realize it's a different topic, but it... I realize it's a different topic, but it is a fantastic gymnasium. It doesn't need, you know, a new gymnasium. So let's look at things and facts before we just automatically allocate resources. My first election in two thousand and four was at First, First Fairview Christian, and so I'm very familiar with that polling place. I think this will be an improvement, so everybody's gonna be coming around the back, not having to go up all the steps at the front, yes.
So the way, way that is situated is there's obviously a circle out in front there, and then there's a driver that goes around the back, and we would have signage, just like we have at many other polling places on Election Day, we have signage directing people to the proper location, and we try to direct them to, obviously, to the ADA compliant loc, you know, entrance to the building. So that's what we do.
And the boundaries, you said it's four tenths of a mile from the boundary, it's outside of the, but four tenths of a mile.
Four tenths of a mile from the other polling place is actually about two tenths of a mile from, from Campbell Avenue.
Okay.
And actually, it's, I think in the diagram is like three hundred, I have to look back at the diagram, is like three hundred and fifty feet. Look at that again.
Pretty close.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, if you are familiar with the area, basically, they drew the line right down the railroad tracks, and it's on the other side of the railroad tracks, and so you have to kind of go across the railroad tracks.
And the Voters Rights Act, I think, is, is it a mile or a half a mile, or what's the, what's the amount of space it must be?
I believe it was, it's within a mile.
Within a mile?
Yes, it has to be within a mile or it requires a special approval by statute from the Department of Elections.
Looks good.
This is my problem?
The only thing I wanted to share, this all looks good. The only thing I wanted to share is this is the second precinct, I think, that we're gonna have that's outside, technically, albeit very, very, very short distance, that's outside of its district. I don't expect us to be going over this matter relatively frequently over the next nine years, but if we do, I think, at least from, from my perspective, as long as I'm here, I'm, I'm not too keen on putting precincts outside of their district, but with that being the case, I do want to commend the Electoral Board for keeping us engaged on, hey, as we were checked out, we looked at this location, that location, it was certainly a team effort in that regard, so I do commend you all, but just from my perspective, want to be very wary of doing that, but I don't see any issues with this here today.
Councilwoman Dolan?
I just suppose if there was nothing else within the precinct.
We did look at a couple of other locations. Do you want to speak to that, sir?
We looked at Fairview Methodist, which has some access challenges of its own, and it's not clear how long that congregation is gonna be in business, tiny congregation, and that the members are few and elderly at this point. And we also looked at Fairview Community Center, which I was very excited by, but it turns out that the City Parks and Rec has a lot of programming there on Election Days for area youth, so we would have had to displace that.
Now, that would have been my thought, fair to the community, that's why I mentioned it. Okay, thank you. Dr. Wilder?
Yes, and they did contact me in reference to looking for a location, so I did also drive around in the area to try to find more locations, and I thought that Fairview would be a great spot, so it was unfortunate it wasn't available to use for those particular election days, so I appreciate that. And I know that notice would go out to all the voters in the area. How long, what's the time period for that, to have to do that?
Well, if we're gonna do this, I mean, some of this really depends, honestly, on the Attorney General, right? So once you guys approve, we have to go through an approval process there. So we're gonna need to actually, you know, if we can get this done for, for March, we really do need him to respond to that, and obviously, we'll be turning around immediately after we get that response. So. Thank you.
I, I agree. I know I went to five or six of the polling locations for precincts on Election Day, and this was the one location that I observed probably the biggest challenges. I was just going around the city, visiting our, our citizens, and I noticed that people had the hardest time getting in and out, and that definitely was, that slope was challenging. So definitely agree that needed to be changed, so if this is the best option, then I think, you know, I support y'all doing it, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Did you have any questions about the election since that was raised?
No, I think we're good. Thank you. All right, moving on to roll call. Dr. Wilder?
Again, I'd like to thank all the men that worked with the Mustaches for Kids. They raised over five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so I want to commend all the men that did, had mustaches for that period of time, for that one month, and Jeff Boswell and all the team that worked so hard for our children, our community, and it just shows the spirit of giving and how we so much better, we work together, and I want to appreciate their work. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dolan?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Huggins?
Just on the recreation front and tourism front and generating tax revenue, a couple days ago, I think last Saturday afternoon, we had lots of activity in Lynchburg. We had the state football championships at Liberty. Liberty also hosted a big meet for track. We had a basketball game that brought in Grand Canyon, who I've never heard of Grand Canyon, but they've just beat the semifinalist from last year, San Diego State in the NCAA Tournament. So they had hundreds of Grand Canyon people, family and friends and alumni or whatever, students, that all came into Lynchburg. Lots of flights, which helps with our, our per-flight tax. You know, it, you look at the rooms, the hotels, the meals, the lines inside, which get compensation because they're meals, the meals tax, and all the popcorn and hot dogs and chips, those lines, and all of them were ridiculously long. I, I talked to several of the people from Grand Canyon, which is Phoenix, and they came, and it was neat and refreshing, and as that happened, I'm thinking, what we're gonna be talking about later tonight, how much do we have to pay for that as a city taxpayer? Nothing. All we had to do is say thank you. All we had to do is allow Liberty several years ago, like we did, when we gave them their property rights back, where they could build and expand, and it is so nice to see that, the generation of all these taxes, whether it be the airport, the property, the meals tax, the cars, all the rental cars that are there, the hotels, all those things, and that's for a basketball game. You know, basketball game that has, you know, twenty of them a year, kind of neat. And so, very thankful for them, and what a barn burner game. I was shocked at how, I mean, it was packed, it was sold out, two o'clock in the afternoon, and just a ruckus crowd, and it was fantastic and great revenue to the city, so, thank you.
Right. Councilman Missions?
One of the things I want to make sure that we're stressing to city employees, and I think you and I are gonna get together on this probably next time we do a one-on-one, is their, their rights under whistleblower protection laws, and making sure it's clear to them that they do have a right to, to come to elected officials with, with things to blow the whistle, so to speak. So that was one of the things that I wanted to bring up, and I'll discuss that with you one-on-one, sir. And then something else is, and I don't know who all in the room is aware of this, but over the weekend, there was actually a call for the execution of myself, Councilmember Huggins, our congressman, and several, several other folks aligned with us. We don't need to be doing that as a community. One thing that is kind of also interesting to me is, as an elected official in Lynchburg, why weren't we notified of that by our police department? Because somebody else called it in. Just a question that I have, but that stuff needs to stop, right? It's gone a little too far, and death threats are just not okay. That's all I have to say.
Councilman Taylor?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Peraldi?
Congratulations Bulldogs to LCA Bulldogs football team. They won the, their first, I believe, their first state championship, was it?
Yes.
So congratulations to them. Do want to thank the city staff for engaging with me. I know it's, I got a comment on my Facebook page, saying, you know, aren't there bigger things for you to be focusing on? There's a lot of things to focus on, but one of which is the leaf collection, and we're forward particularly, respectfully miffed about the schedule, and I understand you gotta pick a schedule and move forward with it and execute as best you can with the resources you got, but thank you for amending that to some degree in some of the problematic areas that a lot of my constituents were highlighting in the last week and a half, so I do thank you on other behalf. One item I wanted us to consider, and this might fall specifically to, to your office, is just considering what Senator Newman offered at our legislative dinner with the potential policies, changes, and items that might come down the pike from Richmond. I do believe it might be worth some, doing something we haven't done in the past, and if there are legislative matters that really could impact Lynchburg, whether it's the per pupil funding, smart scale implications, just some of the things that he specifically mentioned, to have those come to council for, you know, taking an official stance on, like, look, this will really impact us in a negative or positive way, we support it, we oppose it, and I don't intend for City Council to get into state business, but for those major items that will dramatically impact how we do business, I, if you will, I, I do believe that's something we should at least consider, and if council says, no, we don't want to engage on that, that's Richmond, then fine, I'll, I'll just take that loss, if you will, but I, I do think that's something we should at least consider, especially for those major ticket items that our delegation could use extra backup on. Something to consider. In closing, I would also agree that a lot of things have gone too far, to use Councilmember Missions' term, Madam Mayor, I would simply say that to the degree of going after someone's work history on both sides of this topic, whether you used to work for the city and are suing them, or if you used to work for the state and now are a realtor, or if your husband is a retired colonel from the Air Force and served this nation admirably, I don't think it's appropriate in any of those considerations, any of those topics, for us to use that as political capital to go after each other. So I want to make that clear. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Peraldi.
Agreed. Awesome job Bulldogs. I was at that game at LCA. Amazing. Really, really impressive. It's been a really cool football season for our city. I'm super proud, and even if you don't, aren't, you know, fans of, of Liberty or LCA necessarily, it was really great for our city to have those two victories, so I'm very proud and really, we have to support great athleticism. So if you're a football fan and you appreciate good athletes, then we've gotten to see some really good athleticism and good, hard-working players and great coaching, so well done. Okay, tonight, we will be highlighting the Division of Juvenile Services. The Division of Juvenile Services is part of the Lynchburg Department of Human Services and is comprised of the Lynchburg Youth Group Home and the Lynchburg Regional Juvenile Detention Center. The group home provides crisis stabilization through its shelter care services, as well as a longer-term program for youth requiring more structure. This facility provides services to youth from the city of Lynchburg, the counties of Amherst, Bedford, Campbell, and Nelson, as well as other social services agencies throughout the state. In addition to meeting the basic needs of each youth, residents also engage in educational, employment, therapeutic, community service, and daily and/or weekly groups and activities in the community. The detention center provides supervision of up to forty-eight youth awaiting education or disposition, disposition for a delinquent offense, serving time ordered by the court or youth participating in the post-disposition program. The facility ensures the basic needs of residents are met and provides educational, recreational, and mental health opportunities designed to promote positive change within each youth in hopes they are able to transition back into the community as a more productive member of society. From January to November of twenty twenty-three, two hundred and fifteen residents were admitted to the group home and two hundred and forty-five to the detention center. The facilities work closely together with a goal to actively avoid re-traumatization and address the individual needs of each resident and promote positive change within each youth they encounter. So thank you to all of those who work and serve at the juvenile services centers. It's very important, the work you do. Central Virginia United's Community Service Event at the Lynchburg City Stadium. The Central Virginia United Soccer Club, the CVU, is pleased to sponsor the twenty twenty-three United We Give Collaborative Give Back Community Event on Saturday, December sixteenth, at the Lynchburg City Stadium. CVU representatives will be collecting food, toys, coats, pajamas, and sporting equipment for delivery to various local charities. This event will be conducted between ten AM and four PM, during which time there will be open soccer sessions, free food items, and free activities for local youth. Activities conclude with a two PM charity soccer match between CVU coaches and players. CVU will donate the proceeds raised for each goal scored to Miriam's House. Sporting goods received will be given to Challenge Sports Exchange, food will go to LYH Food Not Bombs, coats and clothing to the Salvation Army of Lynchburg, toys to the Parkview Mission, pajamas to the Bedtime Pajama Drive. As stated, Miriam's House will receive the funds raised from this charity soccer match. Central Virginia United especially thanks the Lynchburg Parks and Recreation Department for assisting CVU in this public-private initiative to benefit our fellow citizens. We'll now go into consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments for vacancies to the Community Development Advisory Committee and Horizon Behavioral Health Board of Directors pursuant to Section two point two three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended. Sorry, council members, we are striking the first part of the closed session. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion?
And this, we're, we're striking the first one, which I'm glad we are, because that's really kind of putting the cart before the horse, so we're, we're striking the...
Just the part, just that part of closed session? Yes.
So just for the behavioral health and...
Correct.
Yep, got you. Great.
Go ahead and vote, please. All right, we are now in closed session.